Welcome to the early work session Highland Village City Council. Today is Tuesday, June the 13th. Meeting is called to order at six o'clock. Let the show all council members are present. I was gonna say, let me welcome Ms. Willow Shattuck.
Sorry.
She's touring the police department, our mayor for the day. I assume you all got to introduce to her, chat with her. So we'll move on to item number one, discuss appointments to fill vacancies for unexpired terms for two council representative positions on the Highland Village Community Development Corporation. Start with you, Mrs. Miller.
So the Highland Village Community Development Corporation, also known as 4B, is made up of four board of directors and it's a combination of citizen members and city representative members. So with the recent election, two of those city representative positions were held by council members, Councilman Lombardo and Heslop. So since they're no longer serving on council, we now have two vacancies on 4B. So this is an opportunity tonight for council to discuss appointing members to fill those unexpired terms.
Do we, first question I had was, do we, I don't remember when those two terms actually do expire. One of them up this year.
Yes.
September one.
So one of them expires, actually, they both expire September 30th of 2023. So they both do.
They meet once.
Once a year, maybe twice a year. Yeah, so they do have a meeting coming up in July, so.
Anybody interested?
I would like to do it.
Okay. Anybody else need to?
We get to be neighbors again. And there is an item, a companion item on tonight's action agenda for formal actions.
All right, that was quick and painless. So moving on to item number two, and we'll discuss options for traffic control on Lakeside Drive, Hillside Drive, and Lake Breeze. We'll start with Chief Frye.
I think Scott's gonna go first.
Oh, okay.
Go.
And then Lori and the chief will both have a part of it.
We'll get the good stuff over.
There you go.
All right, so this is our continuation of the Hillside, Lakeside, Lake Breeze intersection. Just a brief history, since we've talked about this a couple times already. The Hillside, Lakeside street itself is thirty-seven foot wide and has one four-way stop sign, three-way stop sign intersection, sorry, the Hillside and. This area right here, the area we're talking about today is right here. We did traffic counts in the area, set it up six times or six days. Traffic count number one being at Lakeside and Lake Heights. We, this reminds you that the traffic count is both directions. So in a six-day period, we counted 3,049 cars. The average speed was 24 miles per hour. The eighty-fifth percentile was 29 and the speed limit area is 30. Two vehicles that were logged between 38 and 41 miles per hour. At 3:00 PM and 1:04:00. Traffic count number two, location on the other side of the area that we're looking at tonight. Kind of a mirror image, this one had 3,371 cars counted over a six-day period. Again, 24 miles an hour was the average. Speed limit and the eighty-fifth percentile was 30. And again, here, we had two logged vehicles between 38 and 41 miles per hour, different times of the day, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. I don't know if that correlates with the same person going to work and coming home.
Very nice.
Kinda sounds like it.
What is, what is the enforcement rating? What is the enforcement rating?
What do you mean, duh?
I never heard that term.
It's on there.
Enforcement rating is, is a recommendation from the program to be low.
Okay.
Since it doesn't, it doesn't exceed the eighty-fifth percentile with, with, you know, anything ten miles.
It's a measure of need.
Exactly.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to recognize the term. I wasn't looking at it there. But we, we use it when we run ours to recommend in the red, of course, sending out troops to the next one.
Is low, medium, high.
So enforcement is just from your guys enforcing? Not necessarily the need for any type of stop signs or any type of traffic calming? Strictly.
The program itself rates, from the data, low, medium, and high. PD is, you know, it's a criteria. So we do have regulatory code for the city. Twenty dot oh two, the city code calls for the MUTCD, which is the Manual Uniform Traffic Control Devices, to be our guide in implementing and placement of signage and traffic standards. MUTCD criteria for the multi-way stop sign installation is like a, like a traffic signal has warrants that it, that should be taken into consideration. One of them is controlling the direction that has obscure vision photography, which is what we have in this particular situation. It's a temporary measure if you have already justified the installation of a traffic signal in the intersection. Five or more reported crashes in a twelve-month period, which includes right turn, left turn, as well as right angle collisions. We've already talked about collisions. There's none in the area. Minimum volumes, 300 vehicles per hour for any eight hours on an average day. Doesn't meet that. We don't have that. Combined vehicle pedestrian traffic in the same eight hours averages 232nd delay for vehicular traffic at, at the intersection. We don't have that either. Eighty-fifth percentile of speed exceeds 40 miles per hour on the major street, which means Lakeside, Hillside Street, which data doesn't show that.
Is this an and or or? Like, does it just have to hit one, or does it have to be like more than one?
You can, you can hit one, and the engineer can make the recommendation. It's better to hit.
Okay.
Traffic signal, you're even hit one. Engineer recommends funding the traffic signal for.
If you want to check what?
If you listen, you're right. We also use what we, what we call ASHTO, which is American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. It's basically the engineering design manual for intersections and most, all traffic, taking out intersections. Site distance is defined as the distance a motor can see approaching vehicles before their line of sight is blocked by any obstruction. So these pictures below are Google Earth pictures, looking east and west. You're on Lake Breeze, looking up, Lakeside, and looking down, Lakeside, looking up, Hillside. It is a 30 mile an hour intersection. There's tables and charts inside the engineering manuals that quantify site distance standards. So a 30, 30 mile an hour intersection, design standard, if, if we were designing that intersection today, we would need 335 feet site distance. The oncoming.
For, I'm sorry, for reference, would you point out about, for example, the photograph from the left?
If you're looking up here.
Right there, about right there would be how many feet?
Three hundred and fifty-five.
Maybe less than 200.
There's only two.
The other side, it increases, but it's not gonna meet the 335.
Nope, there's only about 200, maybe, because those were 100.
Yeah, it's less than 200.
Yeah.
This is probably about ninety-ish, which is on the next slide.
Does it hit at a right angle, the intersection? There we go.
So looking at the site triangles, which is engineering geometry for intersection, this being Lake Breeze, you basically take it at the stop bar or just past the, the center of the drive lane, do your site distance. So that's 220 feet. See, it doesn't meet 330. And if you're this side of Lake Breeze, pull out here, only really see 90 feet.
And you're on, you're in the intersection at that point.
Is this, is the site distance requirement the same for Lake Breeze where we already have the stop signs? And is the site distance 335 feet north and south?
Yep, you should be 335 here, and you should be 335. Since these are the two signed intersect, your streets already, this is, this is what you use for the criteria to signing these. This is the major street.
Right, no, I was just curious where the stop signs currently exist, if they have 335 feet site distance on Lake Breeze leading up to the stop sign.
Over here?
No.
Well, if you're in a stop condition, it's not always the same, right?
It's a, well, yeah, it's different. For stopping condition, you need 200 feet distance. Technically, you really don't have that. If this is, if this is a, we'll call it a hundred-foot block line, frontage, you got a hundred to about here, maybe 130, 140 possibly, coming downhill. So looking at options for the area, we've talked about several of these. I do have some more of the, all these options are in the budget under supplemental requests for the decision makers. We talked about six-foot pedestrian lane, striping a pedestrian lane on the entire run from Island Shores, Hillside, all the way around. That's had a cost of $68,000. That includes striping and signage only. That'll bring the 37-foot wide paving down to 30-foot wide. So the traffic calming in that situation is you are narrowing driving. If you, if you actually took that pedestrian lane and then striped a center lane for each of the vehicle, northbound, southbound traffic, it would even give more of a narrowing lane type situation.
Assuming they wouldn't be able to park in that pedestrian lane?
In the pedestrian lane, it would be a no parking. If we, if we costed out a hard curb gutter type scenario for that pedestrian lane, you could allow the curb gutter side, and then you effectively segregated the pedestrian. However, you'll have to, you know, have some openings or crossings. I'm sorry, go ahead. No, 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 you hadn't gotten there yet. There's no speed limit signs on Hillside, Lakeside, so we would propose to add four to six speed limit signs at $138 each. Speed bumps we talked about briefly.
Are those bumps, humps, or tabletops?
It would be speed bumps like you find in the district area. We would propose adding approximately 13 of them in there.
Those are those, the, like the rubber ones, right?
They're rubber, black and yellow, reflective.
What's the lifespan on those things?
Two weeks before something disappears.
I'm not talking about like, you know, the chop shop or something, but.
Before the coast.
Yeah, probably four to five years.
And you gotta do it all over again.
Oh, it's a main hall, this is. Yeah, yeah, it's ongoing. Another traffic calming item is something that Councilman Forenza brought up, and it's Traffic Islands. So we looked at that.
So, and that's where I was, that's what I was gonna ask. So is, is that something akin to what we see on Island Shores Boulevard?
We have them in the city, or? We have them in the city now. This is Traffic Islands over in the Highland Oaks subdivision.
How wide are we talking? It's seven foot in there. It's not easy.
Seven foot wide, ten foot long.
So seven foot wide on a 37-foot wide street, you're making it 30-foot wide total.
You'd have two 15-foot lanes going around.
Yeah, okay.
However, the downside to the traffic islands is you're, where we place them, you won't be able to park.
There's no parking.
And you won't be able to park either side. So there's pros and cons to each. But it's not a.
We could eliminate the, we could eliminate the parking if it's in the center of the intersection smaller. But it's, it's cost more than it is anything else. I like the option because I like the beautification and the different feature, but it's a cost factor.
That's the other. So it costs a little bit. There's 70,000.
Around about.
That's just the engineering estimate.
Yeah.
That's not the development.
Well, that's got construction estimate.
That's part of it.
Yeah, and it's just four for the whole.
You know where you put them?
Yeah, where we.
We had a few areas picked out.
You'd have to do it more than, more like a straightaway, wouldn't you?
Yeah, there's a lot of.
You had to be careful, so you had, yeah, you had to pick the straightaways. So we would look in here, we would look in here, we would look in here. You'd have to look in here, where you have your, your little cul-de-sac, and there's already a stop sign here. Intersection here, intersection here, intersection here, and you, it's gonna be very monotonous to try to find a sufficient spot. It can be done. It's not gonna be. It does have several pros. Beautification, traffic calming effect. We also took a look at a smaller roundabout since we have, we have a lot of right-of-way in here, and this is with the extra wide pavement section.
Do you need more right-of-way there to make it a?
I think we can make it with the corner clips.
Okay.
As is. We might have to look at a utility relocation or two, electric. Even a small roundabout, pretty under $65,000 range. We do have one in the city. This is the entrance to the Highland Oaks subdivision. This is a small roundabout, it's west corner. That.
Can we go back? Keep, keep going back. To the engineering requirements. Forward. There was one that had all the different criteria that you would need, this one. So we don't meet any of those criteria on that intersection, other than.
Obscure vision.
Okay, that's what I wanted to say. It's visions only. Okay.
And what would be the cost just to put in a four, make it a four-way stop?
Traffic signage would be roughly $140 each. So times four, you'd have to put an approach sign coming into, was the two stops.
So those stop signs are the same cost as a speed limit sign, right? I didn't include, fine, I put less than 500, about 500 blocks staffing hours to put it into. I include that.
It's minimum.
Just to give you the, the background on this, it's in your, in your packets already, but I was approached by a resident after an incident that happened in that neighborhood. He looked at a safety concern, primary concern by the resident who lives here, I believe, was that any traffic running through here. Cars that were turning this way were rounding these corners really close because no one was required to stop. So they're rounding the corners. There's no sidewalks in this area whatsoever. And the visibility for traffic that was stopped at the stop sign was, you had to pull out pretty far in order to see down there, which you saw on the traffic, on the traffic triangles. We don't have that site distance. I was here from the, from the city to, to do that, but before we start going in that direction to vote on things and whatnot, what we did was, I asked Lori, and we used to do this by knocking on people's doors, but we have technology now, so Lori was able to send out a survey. I'm gonna let her speak about the survey. I'll, I'll click for it if you want. I'll tell them about the survey, how it worked, and.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and. So we decided to, to survey our residents and see what they, what their opinions were of a stop sign at that intersection. We chose this area right here that's shown here. It was 48 properties. Then we started gathering the contact info for those properties and developed the survey. Created a door hanger with the QR code that linked directly to the survey. Police went out and distributed those door hangers to all 48 homes over a weekend. And we also emailed the survey to the contacts that we had, that we knew that that was their address.
It took you a weekend to get 48 pushcards on doors. Sean and I could have done that in an hour. Yeah, we were, we were right through office, so.
So they, they did that on a Saturday, and most people responded to the survey that day. And so the survey itself asked, it told people that we were looking at changing from a two-way stop to a four-way stop. And we wanted their participation and their input on that. We asked them to provide their address so that we knew who was responding. And then to say whether they were in favor, not in favor, had no opinion, and if they wanted to provide any comments to us. So we received 29 responses. We had, the marked in green are the ones that responded. We had 33% in favor, 27% not in favor, and 40% that didn't respond at all.
Take a look at this. So 29 responses, but 40% didn't respond at all. So out of the 48, that's the 40%.
Right, from the 50.
Of the 29, you had 33% in favor, 27% not in favor. What of the others? No preference?
They just didn't respond to the survey.
There's two different pools. There's 29 respondents.
Right, so the 20, out of the 29 respondents, 33 were in favor, 27 were not in favor.
29.
Right.
So what was the others?
29 is, makes up the 33 and 27. The non-responsive is the rest of them.
So nobody.
Forty, for the whole group, the whole circle of the area.
Nobody filled in, no, nobody filled in, no.
We're about 15 and 14.
No comment.
No comment.
Favor and.
I was gonna say, so there's a bunch of no comments.
Yeah.
Or no preference.
No response to the survey.
Just, just no response, period.
No response to the survey.
Those that did respond were either in favor or not.
Yeah, no, and picked option C.
Right.
No one said no preference to it. They just said the response.
You had, you had nine, you had, you had nine people that responded in favor.
And eight people that.
Eight people that responded opposed.
So it's a wash.
Am I right?
No, no, it was for the 48 homes, I think it was like 20, I didn't write down the actual numbers of responses.
Thirty-three percent.
It was, it was like a eight. Five people difference between the non-responsive, I mean, the, and not in favor and the in favor.
So, I mean, so how did those 20 not 40? Did they all have an opinion, A and A?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's what those percentages are. That's what that 33% and the 27% is.
Yeah, see, that's for the.
So it was 15.84 people of 33%, so probably 16. And 13.23 people are not in the favor, so that's 13. So 13 versus 16, three, three percent.
Equals 29.
It's 29.
Yep.
And then you had 19 that didn't respond at all. So out of those, out of those 29 that did respond, none of them said they didn't have an opinion? They all had some kind of opinion?
Yes.
Wow.
That's probably the no responses, like, if I don't have an opinion, why am I gonna take that extra step to click that button?
Let's coin flip.
And the thing, if you go back to the diagram of the people that responded here, it was a 50-50 split on the actual corner between two wanted, two didn't.
On the north side, north side.
Really? So it's a, it's all around a wash, in a way.
But you.
I would say it's less than that because I'm gonna assume that the no responses.
No, what she was saying is the, the four houses on that corner.
I get it. It's 50-50, yeah, but what I'm saying is, if you take the not in favor and the no responses, you're almost, I would wait no responses.
As don't care.
As opposed or don't care, right?
Yeah.
They're not actively looking for a stop sign.
Yeah.
As opposed to a third in favor, so.
That's a good point.
I don't know. Other than that, it's 50-50.
Right, I'm not here to influence you either way, just.
Yeah, you are, too. Tell us what.
Oh, yeah, but, so Scott already gave you all the prerequisites of that. Side picture or sideline is really the only issue at hand. We have no doubt of support any accidents in that area.
There are no, no accidents. That's the next question.
Correct, no accidents, and the speed limits were well within the plan, between that and the timeframe. So it's a, it's a big decision to decide, do you wanna? Can I introduce another variable? A whisper into my ear a little while ago, that this area is a preponderance of scooters. Oh, right. So, so it's not a sign.
Signs anyway.
Making that a four-way, well, no, but for the.
Making that a four-way, well, no, but for the drivers. You know, you talk about the visibility at that intersection, if they're not having to stop, they're just able just to turn one way or the other, and you got kids on scooters that can't see, does it make more sense to make that a four-way stop? For this, for.
Stop signs, always remember this, you're not meant to score on traffic, they're meant for safety purposes first and foremost. If you can address it from a safety standpoint, or want to address it as a counter from a safety standpoint, you know, Bardenville just put in a bunch of stop signs on those three ways. We don't wanna be creating stop signs for.
Well, then it sets a precedence, so this neighborhood, and then the next neighborhood, and then the next neighborhood.
I'm, I'm, I'm having a hard time.
I, I, I mean, I, I would, uh, for discussion purposes, okay, because I don't know who's gonna show up, if anybody's gonna show up tonight during that agenda item. They could plead their case and, and twist and turn you into, to one way or the other way, or foot-flop wherever you wanna be. But absent of the data, we have this thing here, we just need a decision tonight to say yes or no. Now, we can still do the scooter enforcement, enforcement in that particular area, if that, that's a concern. But you know, we're gonna fly through, there are no stop signs, they're absolutely.
No, I was thinking about the scooter riders, I mean, I know they're gonna fly through there, I'm just, I was thinking in terms of, of if you, if that were a four-way stop, it's giving drivers a moment of pause as these kids are flying through. Uh, that was the only thing I said about.
Stop, too.
Yeah, they do, technically do, and obviously they're not. Um, what I'm kinda having, what I'm struggling with is the, the survey result. Juxtaposing that against the people that came and spoke to us a couple of months ago. I mean, what, what happened, or where, those people, they just live somewhere completely different than this intersection?
But that was only two or three people that really spoke to us.
Well, I got, I got emails from more than two or three.
Right, but I mean, still, not, not twenties.
It's like, it's almost kinda like, issue faded away.
And, and really, from a street designer's, that area is curvilinear, which is supposed to slow you down, and not supposed to be that, but.
When you see the speed data, the speed data in there is a.
You can't pick up a lot of speed between there and there, you gotta turn too sharp. Just, under my street.
Pick up speed.
Yeah, you can't. I live on a raceway, but that, you, you slow you down a bit. Huh? Oh, you live, okay, you got the bigger raceway.
She's on the short track.
I'm on the short track.
That's our friend over on Highland Shores Boulevard that complains about speed in these.
Oh, yeah.
First house after a stop sign, is complaining about speed, in a hundred feet, so.
I can, I can see too, hey, so with the scooter enforcement and all that, that takes a lot more man-hours and manpower. And, street signs are not that expensive. Does cause a driver to pause, and there is a ramification if they don't pause. And that, from a manpower and, and staffing, and having to keep monitoring the situation, you, you put it in and then it's there.
The reality is, I mean, you're, we're never gonna have a, an officer that's gonna sit there watching people blow the stop sign.
Well, and I'd like to just, you know, clarify this too, is if it went through with a stop sign vote, it would, it would be an ed- a vehement education process, we put the flags up on those things, we advertised through all of our media that we possibly could, we'd have an officer present there, talk to people, and, and, and gain that voluntary compliance and getting used to it. It would not be, you know, what we can't afford, nor can you, is that, oh my god, they put up the stop signs just for revenue purposes, okay? It's not, it's not, it's safety based, as Kevin and I, and, and this council, previous to all of you, have discussed numerous times, anything that we would do is all based on safety, first and foremost, so, that's the consideration, and I would only ask it to say, hey, if, if, if we don't have the data to support it right now, if there's a safety concern with accidents and pedestrians getting run over every day of the week, we don't have any of that data.
If we go back and look at the initial commentary on the, I don't know, and the accident in a curve, for that, where on lake side or lake raised was that?
Thirty, twenty?
The one before had addresses. Thirty-one, twenty, or?
It was, it was in that, general vicinity in that curve right there.
You also remember her saying, uh, Beth, you, it's very clear that the driver of that vehicle was respectfully driving, not.
Well, exactly, exactly, and, and, and that's, it really kinda goes to my point. We're looking at this, and if it's thirty-fourty, they were involved in the survey, if it's thirty-twenty, they really weren't. They didn't even get asked the question, right? They brought it to us because their pet unfortunately got killed. What are we doing by putting up a stop sign? Are we actually solving the problem that they came to us with, which we initially thought was speed? It's not speed, there's no traffic accidents there. What are we solving?
Well, I think that.
Was the accident not at the intersection?
No, no, it was right in front of their house.
It was a, a dog, a dog that was hit.
Right.
The dog didn't die at the scene, it was.
But the issue.
We're talking about an intersection, but it didn't happen at the intersection, so what does it do? Okay, I was under the impression.
This, this came up in that other discussion.
Yeah, okay.
Because this was a safety, perceived safety issue, but there's no recs.
There's no rec, there's no, there's not an issue.
Not only that, but when that dog was hit, the driver wasn't speeding, so, the whole thing is kinda turned into a little bit.
Kinda where I'm going with this.
The dog was not on.
We spent a lot of time and effort, manpower on this, to get to a solution to solve one problem, which isn't a problem. Received problem. We can spend five hundred dollars and put a traffic stop sign there, that is going to stop traffic at that intersection, it's not gonna do anything else for anything else along that roadway. Are we really solving the problem that was laid out before us?
Well, to Rhonda's, to Rhonda's point, if you, if you make it a four-way stop, I mean, you've already got the way the street is designed with the, you know, the ups and downs and, you know, the undulations of the street and everything. You, you're going to, I mean, it's one thing if you're coming around the curve and you can get to thirty or thirty-eight miles an hour, you go all the way around into the second curve, but if you put a stop sign there, you're gonna, you're, you're gonna slow the overall speed in both of those curves down, coming out of that intersection. You're not, you may not necessarily get it going to the intersection, but coming out of it, you will. So, I mean, there is that. But I.
But you brought up a good point, too, as we, as we look into the future behind it, we don't know, kids, what's the next thing after scooters? Is it, and we have motorcycles and everything else, and, yeah, we can't control what kids are doing, but there's something there for them to learn off of.
That's where I kinda go back to, and I, you know, we've always, we've always, we've always negated the conversation, but the speed bumps. There, there you're killing two birds with one stone, you're slowing car traffic down, but you're also creating an obstacle for scooters.
You're also, you're also creating a situation for the.
Yeah, you are.
Emergency services.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Until they create the, 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 the.
However.
Skate, skate, hoverboards.
Yeah, however, to the, for, as far as public safety is concerned, you drive through there, if there are cars parked on both sides of the street, fire truck's slowing down anyway, the speed bump's not gonna slow them down anymore.
I see where, where we're going before, we've got a problem, we don't have. Yeah.
Especially if they lived at thirty-twenty.
Yeah. I'm not, I can't remember exactly where.
You said thirty-fourty?
That's true.
At the base of thirty-fourty.
A, a dog gets up, what is that, and accidentally gets hit, makes no difference where you are right there.
Is a dog gonna repeat offender?
No, well, no.
Their house is.
It was just an accident, just kinda.
Their house is which one?
I know.
It just got out. Turned into.
I really thought it was in the inter- I didn't know it was at the, I mean, the, the, the one place you're gonna slow down the most is where you make that curve. I really, I thought it was in the intersection.
The other prob- the other problem that we have here is, we have no sidewalks. You still have a lot of people that walk the street, because there is not a sidewalk.
That's how it's on one side, is there not on one side?
No.
Well, when you, when you're further down on the lake side, coming off of Highland Shores, there is.
There's a section, but the rest of the way around, there's not.
So you have no sidewalks, which means you're gonna have pedestrians, you're gonna have, um, bicycles, you're gonna have scooters, and you're gonna have cars, they're all mixed in, in, on the street. So, with that, that would drive me to say, I'm in favor of a stop sign, a four-way stop sign for that location. It's not gonna do anything for the other, we have one on the, on, on hillside that slows traffic, but it will make people aware to slow down. So I, I'm in favor for that reason, otherwise, I don't, like you said, I don't think we really have a problem here.
I agree with you that if it's, I mean, if you're looking at the overall picture of safety, when you're dealing with kids and all the other stuff, then it, it might make sense. Um, but if, if it didn't happen in the intersection, it's a problem that we're trying, we're putting a solution where the problem wasn't.
Right. Thirty-fourty, okay, so they were.
They were in the survey.
Was the car, was the car heading from east to west?
I don't remember. Well, they're, you know, the first house, and, so their concern primarily was the speed, not the intersection. But the signs are one way to help traffic calm.
Yes.
Stop signs, so that helps address their request, and gives us the safety because of the sightlines. That hasn't been a problem.
I think at the end of the day, what we heard from residents, I think the residents recognized, in, in particular in the, in the case of the Bates dog, the driver wasn't speeding, I think they recognized, especially when we showed them the data, it's, it's not a speeding, exceeding the speed limit sign, but I think what they wanted to see was us to do something to slow traffic down even more than what it is. I, I think that's what they were really looking for.
Yeah, because I think the one, one resident, you know, they, they said they kinda did their own little speed study, they were guessing how fast cars were going, and they always thought the car was going faster than, than it was, so. It might, with the hills, engine noise, yeah, it's gonna throw you off a little bit, somebody's coming up a hill, engine's revving, you're gonna think they're going faster. Well, the residents, the ones that spoke, went a twenty miles an hour, with school zone, and that's.
Yeah.
No one will support that.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. About your decision.
Yeah, so. So when we go out, this is an item on the agenda, when we go out to council, are you gonna do the, the same kinda presentation again for folks out in the audience, or how's that gonna go?
I think it takes, uh, this agenda item, and then.
Yeah.
Whenever there's a, if there's any, I think you have to open it up for residents or anybody else to talk about.
Well, no, but in terms of the item itself, are y'all going to run through this slideshow again, or?
Didn't intend to.
Okay.
But, I mean.
You'll need to review it.
The workshop, don't even have to keep it on the agenda. I mean, is there any reason to go through this again, I mean, if, if we in here have a consensus, a consensus, you know?
I don't think you can take it off the agenda, it's published.
No, take it off.
We can take it off.
Table it.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah. Because I. I would, I would table it, I mean, at this point in time, doesn't mean people can't talk about it, but I would table it, because I think if, if we were to take a vote.
Go back to the slide that had the options and their, their associated costs. I remember the, this, like, the stripe. There you go.
I mean, I don't know how many people wanna have people stopping right next to their house and then accelerating, stopping, accelerating, I mean, it's.
That's a good point.
It's noise.
That's more noise.
What about, what about the pedestrian lane?
They're gonna ask people not to park in front of their homes.
Yeah, that's, that, that, that forty percent.
They're gonna do that anyway, you, you drive down Selmair, there's a pedestrian lane on Selmair, people park in the middle of the pedestrian lane all the time.
Well, there's no parking, well, the part of there is no parking signs, but the rest of it, there isn't no parking signs, so.
Yeah, I mean, they don't.
I don't know.
That's an issue that's by design in this community. Deliberate.
What?
I, I, no sidewalks.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but I'm talking about if we did, if we did the pedestrian lane, I mean, that's a, and it, it's inexpensive, it accomplishes the task of dr- of slowing traffic down a little bit.
That's sixty-eight thousand dollars to, to do a, a cycle lane or pedestrian lane that people are gonna park in. To Sean's point. They're gonna park it in anyway, I mean, we've already got.
Well, and that comes to that magic E-word. Enforcement.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that forty percent that didn't respond.
Yeah.
That forty percent's going to respond saying, why can't I park in front of my house anymore, so, I mean.
I'm just trying to check each one of these off, that we don't have any kind of consensus or desire.
That sixty-eight K, how, how often do you have to re-stripe it?
Probably, what, every two years, just like we do with the school zone striping? Yeah.
And I realize streets are public, but it is part of an HOA, does HOA have any impact on that one?
It's public right-of-way.
Yeah.
I would, I would suggest that we table it, because we don't have improvements.
Yeah.
Decision, but we've got the study done, we don't have to redo this sometime in the future, we wanna reconsider it. We can dust it off and bring it back out and say, something's changed.
But do you think it's incumbent upon us to consider the safety of the pedestrians and the cyclists with no sidewalks?
We don't, we, we have no data that says there's ever been anything up there.
So it's not my, I mean, I don't.
Well, I mean, you, you know, the, the kid, the kid that was on his scooter Monday, that, that, we don't know what happened to him.
Where was he?
He was on hill, uh, hillside.
No, but where on hill, it's almost three miles to there.
Yeah, I don't, what, what's, what block was that?
Sort of my mind was like, pushed out to tonight's, for, for a solution for you.
The, the, the incident with the kid on the scooter on, last Monday, where on hillside was that?
I don't, I don't. Chief, do you remember?
Is this?
It might have been the other side of hillside.
Now that we have this data, is it something that we can table and bring it into a larger discussion when the super fun scooters discussion starts? It's not, we've heard you, we have data, we're collecting more, because isn't that coming up? And we need maybe take a holistic city look instead of one person in one na- in one house?
So, I don't know who is gonna show up for the agenda items, so if, if there were people who were planning to show up, talk.
Yeah, because it.
Table it.
Because it was posted on the regular meeting, if people, if somebody signs up to talk, we're probably gonna have to let them speak, but that, that still doesn't mean you have to take any action on it.
Action's taken after that anyway.
Correct, so you, if it comes up, it still takes a motion and a second to open it up. If there's a motion, at least any council member in here who has an idea that there wants to be a discussion, gets that opportunity to voice it as their opinion, and a second gets the same kinda thing, and you still need a vote to say yes or no, if no one votes, it dies, so to speak, but it can only.
So the way, the way, also be to table.
Yes.
The way, the way it would work, the, the way it would work is, we get to the agenda item, if, if, if we go in there and she has three or four people that fill out a speaker's form, and they wanna speak to this issue specifically, I will hold their forms until we get to that agenda item, and then they can speak. And then we have our discussion, and then somebody can, and then all I say to somebody, would somebody like to offer a motion? You can make your motion, you know, based upon the emotion of what you just heard a resident say, or what we've seen here, or some combination of both, to, to either table, to approve or not. So the motion would, the motion would come after, there's been, we've heard from, or we've potentially heard from residents and had our own discussion. So I, I, the table is still out there, but it would be.
It'll be a motion to table or a motion to approve.
Yes.
Totally, really, essentially.
Why would we table it?
Because it, effectively it dies. We're not having to say, we're not having to say yes or no.
Well, I, I think, I think Rhonda said it better, that if we table it for further discussion when we talk about the scooters, and we wrap it up as a whole city issue rather than a specific street issue here, and we have another one in six months, or another year, or whatever.
But this is specifically for this intersection, right?
Yeah.
So any larger issues, this agenda item's not even gonna be relevant, right? Because we're tabling this, this resolution, right?
Well, you'd be tabling this item, just this.
Which is a.
Action on this intersection.
Yeah, which, which is a resolution, right?
It's an ordinance.
Ordinance, but specifically for this?
Yes.
Yeah, well, to put signs up, we need an ordinance to put signs up.
That's a different ordinance, which is a different agenda item, so I, I guess I'm just not understanding why we're tabling this one.
No, the ordinance, the ordinance as presented tonight is just for these two signs.
Correct.
Yes.
That's not a very large issue that we would come back and revisit, so what I'm asking.
No, you're tabling just, you're right, you're tabling just this ordinance and what council others said is, wait, hold off on discussion for this until you've wrapped it into the rest, bigger discussion.
Anything we do in the bigger discussion would be its own ordinance, right?
Yeah, yes.
So why are we?
Because what she's saying is the data, the data that we have could be part of a larger pool of data.
That's fine.
We could still vote it down if, if we don't agree, but we could, as part of that saying, we have, we are data collecting, because when the scooter issue comes up, there's gonna be more data collecting, and, and in order to make a.
Correct, I mean, I understand, I just don't know why we table this issue, because eventually we have to deal with this one issue.
But this, what, the data that you're gonna call for the scooters, it's gonna be similar to the data we have in this particular location, is that correct?
Well, it, it would be a little bit different, of course, we'll certainly have the information about accidents that we've occurred, but, but the, beyond that is gonna be more or less rules of enforcement and, and, uh, training and different things like that.
It's not gonna be specific to, to certain intersections.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so.
So, and my thought was, if you would, to your point, if we, if we rolled it into a broader discussion, we'd have data points throughout the city that we could address. data points throughout the city that we could address at one time. We're not gonna get that and that kind of data. This is, it's a more of a generalistic look at, for the scooters, it's not gonna be.
I guess it's a technical question. If we table this ordinance, what happens? It can never come back?
No, it don't come back.
No, I mean, can we just never bring it back up?
Good, just never bring it back up. Yeah, because if you don't table, as long as you don't table it to a date certain.
Okay, we table.
It won't, it'll come back up next time we bring it back up.
Why would we just not deny it?
Tabling, the o- the other thing that tabling gets you is, you're not saying no.
I think.
You are saying no by inaction, I mean, that's.
No, I mean, I, personally, I'd be happy to vote no.
I would, I think we should make an affirmative step at this point, right?
Or nothing.
Yeah.
Or, my only concern was sightlines, but with no data. Because I don't drive through there every day.
I mean, I'm all in favor of opening this up, but I just, this one issue, I don't see why we would table it if we never intend to act.
It's, you, well, that's fine, I mean, he, John was just making it, it is an option that's available.
I'm just following what our city attorney has recommended that we try not to table stuff.
I heard that.
No, no.
About six years ago.
The statement is try, try to do nothing, is, is to take no action is what for, even if.
That is exactly what we're talking about here.
At least tabling it is at least some action, even if.
So, so let me, so let me ask you. Kevin, let me ask you this.
Just so, just so for her minutes, she knows something's happened to it.
Let me ask you this. So we get through, we get through the presentation of the item and say maybe some residents speak and blah, blah, blah. And then I say, I'll entertain a motion, and nobody gives a motion. Is there an amount, an amount of time I should wait until I just conclude that nobody wants to make a motion to approve this? Because that's the way it really dies, is if nobody makes a motion to approve.
Yeah, that's one way to do it, but I'd still rather say, if no one's gonna take any action to approve it, I'd really rather you solicit an action to, again, solicit action to table the item. Mainly because for, for historical record purpose, we'd prefer to have something, even if it's just tabling it. Without, without its date certain.
We were also elected to make a decision, and if all we're tabling it for is to wait it out, I'm with, I'm with Robert. Make it, make a motion to deny it.
Or, what I prefer is you make a motion to approve and a vote against the motion would be. You know, kind of like.
You're right.
And just in the course of the motion to approve the consent agenda item and moving 17, add the names in your motion of who's going to be appointed. Do we have to specify which seat?
They're just city representatives and they both expired at the same time.
Okay.
So Dan's doing that? When you read off consent, you'll be adding those as you read consent? So you're adding 16 and 17?
Well, usually you have to get out there and say, "We'd like to move somebody." And then he says, "No objection," and you'll move it.
Okay.
So the only thing on action is going to be the 15?
Right. If we don't get anyone speaking on it, then that'll be quick. All right. I want to thank the chief and public workers and Lori for all the work on this.
Agreed.
Definitely doing due diligence.
All right. There's nothing further. Our work session closes at 6:52. So.
Items of community interest pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0415. City council may report on the following items: expression of thanks, congratulations, or condolences, information about holiday schedules, recognition of individuals, reminders about upcoming city council events, and information about community events, and announcements involving imminent threat to public health and safety. Does anyone have anything they want to report? There being none, I do have one thing. If our mayor for the day will join me down in front of the dais. Come with me.
You know, and mayor, while you're walking down, I do want to give a big shout out to the Parks Department, Public Works, Police Department, Fire Department for what an excellent event on Saturday. Celebrate Highland Village was over the top, so entire city staff did a yeoman's job for that, so thank you.
There were a lot of social media posts about how absolutely fantastic the event was, so ditto. So I'm going to take this, and then this is for you. Okay? You can come right here. So we have a proclamation. Whereas the City of Highland Village is served by and is proud to support the Lewisville Independent School District, and whereas the City of Highland Village recognizes that current LISD students are the future leaders of our city, county, state, and nation, and understands the importance of increasing students' knowledge of the operations of local government, and whereas Highland Village Elementary School has provided Highland Village students in grades kindergarten through fifth grade with a highly qualified education, and whereas the City of Highland Village offered a mayor-for-the-day opportunity to one lucky student, and Highland Village Elementary fourth-grade student Willow Shattuck was the successful recipient. Now therefore, on behalf of the city council and the city staff, I, Daniel Jaworski, Mayor of the City of Highland Village, do hereby congratulate and recognize Willow Shattuck as mayor for the day in the City of Highland Village. So you get to keep that. Ms. Lori's going to take pictures. You want to come up, Mom? And I had one more thing for you. I saw that you had drawn a picture, so let me borrow this real quick. So I got your picture, so you can make sure and take it home. I really enjoyed having you as mayor for the day. There you go. Don't sell it on eBay. And that's yours. So you're welcome to continue to join us, or if, Mom, if y'all have... You want to stay with us? All right. It won't be long.
It's got, yeah. It's not very... We're going to blow. We're going to close it.
All right. Moving on to visitor comments. Now addressing visitor comments, anyone wishing to address city council must complete a speaker's request form and return it to the city secretary in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. City council is restricted in discussing or taking items or taking action on items not posted on the agenda. Action on your statement can only be taken at a future meeting. Ms. Miller, do we have anybody that submitted anything? All right, we get to move on. Item number 10, city manager and staff reports. Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, Mayor, I've got a few things, and then Chief Reim has one as well, and then, of course, we do have the village report. First, we have been conducting the Highland Village Business Association survey. So far, we have 1,200 people that have completed the survey, and we're going to close that at the end of the week. So people would like to participate on that. Go to highlandvillage.org/survey. Also, of course, we had some hell damage here on Sunday, so roofers and contractors are out. If they are coming door-to-door, they should have a solicitor's permit. If a resident's concerned about that, make sure they have their permit, and we posted it on Facebook so people know what that looks like. And so for any contractors out there, if they are going to do that, please get that permit. And it is that time once again to apply to serve on boards and commissions. The application deadline is July 31st, and you can go to highlandvillage.org/volunteer for more information. And the Highland Village Road entrance ramp to northbound I-35 East, we do not have any more update than we've had before. Still waiting on the height sign.
Can't ask about that in late now.
I saw some people looking at it the other day. They were contractors, and I thought maybe they're about to open it, but...
They do have it striped. I didn't see that they got the stripes down, so it must be getting really close.
They've got to be close. And Chief Reim has an item as well.
Thank you, Paul, mayor, council. I just want to do, highlight that solicitor's badge right now. It's a big item for us always. We've just included a new update on our website that you can actually see authorized solicitors, who they are. Most importantly, I sign every one of those applications after a little background investigation on them by my folks that work for us. And more importantly, if they're not following the rules, people can make complaints to us, and I can revoke their privilege. So just keep that in mind. So thank you. The other item that I want to address is the scooter...
Issue.
Issue. I don't know if I call it issue, the scooters. And since we've had some incidents of occurrence in the city, safety-related, and it's becoming very apparent that some things need to be worked on that, we have formed a tentative working group within the city, and various department heads, up to including a member who graciously volunteered from the council, John Kixmiller, to be part of that working group also. It has not formally met yet, pending our meeting on Saturday at our workshop, where I expressly am hoping for input from all of you in regards to what we really, where we really want to go, and cleaning up some language and some ordinances, and addressing the safety concerns. After that, we hope to move very quickly with more education, more training, more support for moving, keeping kids and the rest of our community safe while they're riding. That scooter stuff also, we'll probably address, as we talked in the past, even other safety items, skateboards, biking, etc., in our parks and under trail systems. But that's all to be addressed later. I just want everyone to know that we're working diligently as a city, working together to try to help that issue out.
Going back to solicitors, and Paul, this may be a question for you. The permitting department, if I recall, they might have a list of, they keep a list of all the different companies, and in this case, roofers, for example, that have already gone through that vetting process and are so-called approved, or I don't want to use the word recommended, but approved vendors?
It really wouldn't be approved. They would have the list of who is a registered vendor, and of course, before they do work on a roof, they've got to get a permit, they've got to have their insurance, and prove all of that.
So that's something, if a resident wasn't sure who they should use, they can call and they can ask about that list, right?
See if they're on the list.
Two issues, the people who authorize to do it, and people who are going on door-to-door knocking.
Right.
I have a button here.
Go ahead.
Oh, is the solicitor list, is that what you have online, you said?
Yes. Who's authorized to knock on doors right now.
Okay.
If they're not on that list, they're not authorized, and I encourage you to call the police because we respond to all of those complaints.
And they're supposed to wear that lanyard in clear view.
Correct.
And to that point, of course, we're talking about roofs right now, but any type of solicitation in the city, they've got to go through that same process.
Right.
Are there any exceptions?
Yes. They'll call in our city attorney to give you the long list, but there's a few, not a long list.
I think the summary is those constitutionally protected First Amendment right type of solicitors, such as politicians, you know, political campaigns, religious organizations, the typical constitutionally protected type speech are exempt.
All right, anything else? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Think we have a village report, is that right?
We do.
We had a blast. A special thanks to our sponsors who helped make it a successful event. See you next year. HV Parks and Rec has you covered this year for some fun classes and athletic programs. Check out classes like children's cooking, or American Red Cross CPR, and babysitting. There are also programs like Fit for Mom, Camp Gladiator, yoga, and more. Check hvparks.com, there is something for everyone. The HVBA would like to invite you to visit our newest businesses. Have some room for a unique furniture piece in the house? Check out Lothack in the shops. Looking for a better sleeping experience? Visit Sleep Number at the shops, too. New to Highland Village Plaza is the Zoom Room, an indoor dog park for exercise and training. And finally, new inside painted tree is Mary's Rose Garden Tea Room, where you can enjoy lunch, tea, and a delicious sweet snack. And as always, check bhba.com to find everything you need in Highland Village.
All right, moving on to consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda so that it may be considered separately, and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. The items currently on consent are item number 11, consider approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting held on May 23, 2023. Number 12, consider approval of resolution 2023-3072, authorizing an investment advisory services agreement with Valley View Consulting LLC. And number 13, receive budget reports for period ending April 30, 2023. Is there any discussion needed for any of the items on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like us to add also to the consent agenda item number 16, which is the resolution authorizing an agreement with Reynolds Asphalt, and also number 17, which is the resolution appointing council representatives Rhonda Hurst and Brian Fierenza to the unexpired terms for the Highland Village community business development. Like to add both of those to the consent.
Okay. Any comment or anything from anybody else? All right. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve consent? Well, I guess I should probably read out those other two issues specifically, correct? Okay, all right. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we approve consent agenda 11, items 11, 12, 13, with the additional items 16 and 17 as read.
All right, we have a motion to approve from council member Feaster. Anybody else with a second?
One second.
All right. Second from Deputy Mayor Protem Fierenza. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries seven zero, or eight zero. Moving on to the action agenda. We did not meet in closed session, so there's nothing to do with item number 14. Going on to item number 15, consider ordinance 2023-1302, amending the code of ordinances Chapter 20, Transportation and Traffic, Article 20.04, traffic schedules by amending Section 20.04.002, stop intersections by adding new stop locations on Lakeside Drive and Hillside Drive at their intersection with Lake Breeze. This would be the first of two reads. Police Chief Reim and Public Works Director Scott Kristin and Lori Mullins would present. Is there anything that y'all have to say?
Let's not. I mean, according to earlier discussion, I think that we should table their presentations and go directly to a vote, or make a motion that we... How do we make the motion, Kevin?
It depends on the motion you want to make. If you want to make a motion to approve and then vote on that, or make a motion to table.
Can we forego the presentation part of it, or...
Forego, if this council does not desire presentation, you can forego the presentation.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion that we...
Just, I know, if the motion, keep in mind, you can vote against a motion that you... For purposes of making sure we don't vote on a double negative, we always prefer that you make a motion in the affirmative.
Okay. Then I would like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 2023-1302, amending code of ordinances as read.
Okay. Mayor Protem Kixmiller's offered a motion to approve. Is there a second?
One second. Go ahead.
Second by council member Nelson. Any discussion needed whatsoever?
Just to clarify, we are voting to approve the ordinance?
Correct.
Which would be for the installation of two stop signs.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion fails. Five to two, is that right? And we moved 16 and 17, so that moves us up to late work session. Status reports on current projects and discussion on future agenda items. Does anybody have anything for late work session? Councilman Feaster?
Yes, so in light of not approving ordinance 2023-1302 to the addition of the stop signs, I would like to propose, and I'm sure this is already going to be planned, but that we take a more holistic view within our community on stop signs, traffic calming, other more, other ways that we can look at solving some of the larger problems within our community rather than piecemealing stop signs here and there. So I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Anybody else? Sir?
Real quick, I would just like to thank the chief for the new auxiliary vehicle that was delivered, I believe, two weeks ago. It is a Dodge pickup truck, four-by-four, with a Hemi. It is fantastic, and I know our auxiliary guys are loving it right now.
I'm still waiting for my test drive. I'm telling you, if I see that thing sitting somewhere with the keys in it, it's going to disappear for a while.
[INAUDIBLE] members that want to push that, and to thank you for their support, and then ultimately, [INAUDIBLE]. I think all of us have lived in the [INAUDIBLE]. It was a team effort, still always is, always will be. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Paul.
Last call. Anybody have anything else? If not, the meeting is, you can close the meeting. Bang us out. Meeting is closed.
Meeting is closed.
All right. Here, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.